Was I actually looking for an air?
Yeah.
I was.
Did you find the air? Where's Waldo?
I was skipping it. Okay. Disappointing.
Bummer for you.
I know. That is, that's a great thing. Actually, I really enjoy that. Are you speaking on something interesting?
The holiday cards.
That's interesting.
I think you get Cory and Petch tonight.
I'm already looking at the list, just excited, excited.
Okay. It is 5:30 PM and I now call to order the Grand Island Public Schools Board of Education meeting. This is the November 13th, 2025 meeting. Notice that this meeting has been advertised in the Grand Island Independent, which is the district's designated method of giving notice of these meetings. We want all those in attendance to know that copies of the Open Meetings Act are available at the entrance to the boardroom. If anyone in attendance is interested in addressing our board, you are welcome to do so. We simply request that you complete the appropriate form and turn it in to us so that you may be recognized during the request to address the board part of our meeting. If you have not already completed the form, please see the staff person outside the entrance to this room. Public comment is welcome. We do ask that no signs be brought into the boardroom. Mrs. DeBert, would you please call the roll?
Mr. McFarland.
Present.
Mr. Hawley.
Here.
And Ms. Garcia Mendez.
Present.
Mrs. Albers, here. Mr. Sykes and Mrs. Douglas have gave prior notice of their absence. Mr. Barserson has also given prior notice that he will be attending late. Mrs. Wilson, here. Mrs. Goodman, here.
Thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. The consent agenda to be approved is as follows. Items number 3.1 through 3.10. I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the minutes or the consent agenda, excuse me.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second by Mr. Garcia Mendez. Under discussion. Proceed to vote. Motion passes. Item number four, special recognition. 2025 GISH All-State Musicians. Oops.
Are you on the right? That's no. So it's fine. Go here.
Let me sit through. Oh, okay.
Yeah, you're fine. And then go ahead. Then go struggle to recognition.
Uh, Reths.
No, you're good. So you're right there.
Okay. Apologize for that. Wrong meeting. All right, item 4.1 Superintendent's Holiday Card Contest Finalists and Winners, Mr. Mitchell Ross.
All right, hello. I'm sorry, I am not the GISH All-State people. I'm way less interesting than that honor, but I am excited to come to you once again. This is a cool project that I get to help facilitate with Mr. Fisher, which then also means you get to hear from me every December or January. So what we're going to be doing tonight for a few minutes is celebrating some students and their artwork and their talents that have been selected to be recognized. So a little bit of background for you. So the Superintendent Holiday Card Contest is a tradition that predates my time in the district and it predates Mr. Fisher's, but it's a tradition that we both like to keep going because it celebrates the artistic work of our students. So a little bit of background, this is the 10th year we have done this program in the district, which is really exciting. And every year around November, we invite every student in the district, if they would like, to submit original artwork to be considered for this friendly competition. And then we gather all of the submissions and then we select a finalist from elementary, middle, and high school. And then Mr. Fisher selects an overall winner whose artwork gets to be printed on the annual holiday card that we send out to families and community partners and the like. So this year, we're really excited. We received over 1,400 submissions, which is about 100 more submissions than we got the year before. So you'd imagine I have a stack of 1,400 card designs on my desk in my office. And I've got a picture of Mr. Fisher holding the huge stack as well that we shared online. 1,400, that's a lot, but that's really cool. That's original artwork submitted by our kids in the district. And we had every school represented from the OLC all the way through up to the high school, which is really, really awesome. So our process is we take that stack of 1,400 and then we narrow it down to a more manageable field. And then we set those out for people in this building. We've got over 100 people that work in this building and they get to take a look at the smaller field of submissions that we've got and vote on their favorite ones. So then that shrinks the pool down a little bit more. And I take the top vote getters and I put them on Mr. Fisher's desk and he picks the finalists and the overall winners. So what I'm going to do next is I'm going to show you the artwork from the students that were selected as finalists and winners. And then we're going to bring them up and let them be recognized, get their certificates and their pictures taken because all of them are here tonight with their families and educators from their schools. So first up, we have our elementary finalist. We have Maria, she's a fifth grader from Howard. She's in, she is in Mr. Weisman's class. And this is the artwork that she submitted. This was the top selection from our elementary school field. And one thing I'll point out, you'll see on the three different designs, I love this year how we have different art techniques and different art tools represented. So there's a lot of pencil work on this one, which is really cool. All right, now we have our middle school finalists. We have Gabriella, she's an eighth grader from Walnut Middle School. And this one was selected as the top middle school design out of the field of all middle school submissions that we received this year.
Take special note of the footprints.
Yeah, like the, the level of detail on that, the footprints in the snow, everything, it's pretty awesome. And then I am pleased to share with you our overall winner this year that will get to be printed on the holiday card is from a freshman from the high school. We have Leila. And this is the overall winner this year. Lot of cool art technique, bright colors, happy holidays. Got an elf traipsing through the snow. We got Santa flying across the moon, so really beautiful artwork. All of the designs are really, really great, but Leila's artwork is the overall winner from this year's field and will be printed on our holiday cards. So before we welcome the kiddos up to get their honor and recognition, do y'all have any questions about the program or anything? All right, so Maria and Gabriella and Leila, I'll invite you all to come up to the front here. And then come right on up to the, to the, kind of this landing up there. Mr. Fisher's going to have certificates for you and then we're going to take some photos.
All right. Congratulations. I love the perspective on you. How it shows things get smaller is really awesome. Gabriella? Nice job. There, congratulations.
All right, so what we'll do first is we'll do a group photo of everyone together with Mr. Fisher and Mr. McFarland. And then we'll do individual pictures with each student if, with their families if they want. Does that work? All right, good deal. All right, so everyone smile. All right, one more. Wonderful, all right. So first we'll do Maria, if you'd like. Would you like to have a picture with your family up here? It's okay, it's your choice. You don't know? Or do you just want a picture just by yourself? Is that okay? All right, cool. So if y'all will, yeah, step over to the side, I'm going to get a picture of just Maria and Maria's family. If you want to get pictures, you can. All right. All right, perfect.
Yeah, come on up.
Wonderful. All right, smile. Perfect, good deal. All right, congratulations, Maria. Have you come up next? If you want, you can have your family come up too.
Yep.
All right. Okay, smile. Do you want to get some pictures, Julie? Or did you get some?
I did.
Okay, perfect.
Great.
Wonderful, congratulations. All right, Leila, your turn and if your family wants to come up.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, smile. Perfect, all right.
It's good.
Yeah.
Come forward.
Thanks, wonderful, awesome, thank you.
Okay, item number five, request to address the board. And we do not have anyone who has asked for addressing the board. So we'll go on to information items under six. Item 6.1, 2026, 27, and 27, 28 GIPS calendars option. Dr. Kohler.
Just hanging out back there.
We need to like a buzzer or something. Always put something boring in front of me, not exciting things. Okay, I am here to talk about calendar committee. We are bringing two calendars forward this year for the 26, 27, and the 27, 28 academic years. So the process, I'll just talk a little bit about that. The committee is made up of at least one person from each building. And then we have represented groups as well. We have GIA, GIEA represented, administrators, L4L, Special Education, Success Academy, Early Learning Center, activities. We have both, we have people from GISH and the middle schools represented and then the Board of Education. We had Amanda Wilson join us and then we had Donna Douglas join us this year as well. The meetings, we start in September. We have one in person on September 24th was the day this year. And we meet and we just go through and talk through everything and bring up ideas and share them out. That's a really nice time for everyone to be in the room together. And then we follow up. I also like to follow up with the forms. That way I hear from each individual in each building and get feedback from each of them. So it's kind of a nice combination. We start off all together, but then I make sure that we hear from everyone individually so I, I know where every building stands. So some of the common questions and concerns that were raised this year, number of professional learning days. That was something that was brought up from several different buildings, feeling like there were too many professional learning days. That's not something the calendar committee decides, but it is a concern I took back to the district leadership team and we really talked through that piece and then determined that it aligns with our strategic plan goals and supports our priority of investing in staff to improve student learning. So the number of professional learning days will remain the same. We did also discuss adjusting the start and end dates. We start pretty early in August for these next two years and several people suggested, let's start a week later in August and go a week longer in May. Really, it was pretty torn between the two groups. Some people that wanted to start later in August. We had just as many people in May saying, that is such a long month already, we don't want to go another week later. So we just left as is because it was pretty torn. And then this was not a common question or comment, but a piece that did come up. We have a high number of unfilled absences on the last Friday in September every year. This year, there were 113 absences and we were unable to fill 37 of those. So it really impacts instruction. We talked about a couple of different options and the one we landed on was moving a planned prep day from November to that September and Friday. It does take away a report card prep plan day in November, which was the biggest concern about moving that day. And we talked with principals and they agreed that a PLC collaboration time they have set up in November, they would go ahead and return that to work on report cards for that afternoon. So some support for teachers there. And just the only additional comment is really it's set up very similar to this year's calendar and last year's calendar. Not a lot of difference overall. Questions for me?
Ms. Albers.
The number of absences at the end of September, is that because of junk junk?
It is on that weekend, but that is not the only.
Okay.
There are a lot of things that fall on that weekend. Everyone kind of attributes it to junk junk, but a lot of things seem to happen that weekend. It's not just that, for the other reason.
Because that has come up before when I served on calendar too, so I was just curious. It's definitely a trend.
Yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you. I was, I think previous years, it's customary to bring one school year calendar. Could you talk as to the, I guess, reasoning why we're seeing like two? Not that I'm against it, it's just like, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Last year, I just took the idea to the committee to see what they thought about it and they did like it, but they wanted last year's calendar was a new calendar they had created with a new kind of pattern to that. And so they really wanted a year to live in that calendar before they determined whether they wanted to make multiple. And being able to cut a meeting out for everyone and the work, I think they appreciated being able to do that in this setting so we don't have to do it for two more years.
Anyone else? All right, well, thank you, Dr. Kohler. Okay, item number 6.2 Annual Facilities Maintenance Project List, Mr. Dan Petch.
Thanks, President McFarland. So Virgil told me I had 40 minutes and so I'm going to go ahead and cut this down to 35, so. Now, this is always a big deal for us. It's a huge team effort. I want to say thanks in particular to my team and my assistant Gabby Ryan, who, you know, she does most of the work. I just kind of, I'm there. But a lot of work goes into this. We start planning for this actually before, you know, school starts. And, and so the process that we kind of go through is first I meet with my team. We go through the previous project list, things that, some of these things have to get carried forward because we can't get them all done. You know, and just meet with my team to figure out what are some of those high priorities that they have, that they know about. And then I go to the buildings and talk to the principals and get their input. This year, my assistant Gabby and, and Mr. Harden went with us on that tour of the district to get all that input. We take that back to the, obviously the admin here, go through all those needs, start to whittle that list down. And then through a lot of different gyrations and a lot of different conversations, we get to this list that you guys are looking at right now. So a lot of hours into that. The, if you look at this list, it hasn't really changed much, but we have the buildings listed, we have project description. You see the BP, that's a building priority. The DP is a district priority. Then obviously the totals of what those are, project type. A lot of our projects are really focused towards security this year in particular, just like last year, using the QC puff dollars to get these, some of these really big, heavy lifts done. If you look at also in the colored columns there, we have our different funding sources of where we're going to, you know, pull money from to put onto these projects. I'd note that special building fund, we are not using anything out of that fund just because we have some other bigger facility needs that we think that we really want to try to keep as much money in that fund as possible for what's coming up, some of the big stuff that we've talked about a little bit already. So, you know, QC puff's on there, general funds on there, depreciation, and we also have other, which sometimes we have things that are the building can fund or we have donated things. So those, that's kind of the, the funding sources. And then projects, I'm not going to go through all these, but I'm going to highlight a few of them. Number one, we talked about last month and you guys approved, and that's replacing the parking lot here at the Neo Admin. And then, and one of the other bigger ones that's coming up too and I'm pretty excited about, and that's doing an upgrade at the Planetarium at GISH. And replacing, giving a facelift to the space, but also coming in with a new dome, new projectors, and it's going to be outstanding. I think it's, and it's not just for the school use. I think that at some point there'll be some community use and, and so it's, you know, it's a community asset. And I think we're going to explore the use accordingly. And then from last year, one of our big ones was doing a security camera and vape detection upgrade. So that's, that's a biggie. You know, another biggie is senior high replacing the cooling tower. It's, that's just an age thing. You get to a point that we focus on making sure that we take care of the buildings so that we don't have a failure. And so we're at that point that we want to do that this summer so that we don't end up with a failure or possibly this spring. We'll kind of see what works out. Barb Middle School, another very large HVAC upgrade in the three-story area there. This has been, there's a little history on that because back in the bond, we wanted to do that project back then. But because of when we came out to bid, we were still higher than what we anticipated. And so we had to take that off the alternate list. And so it carries on to this list and it's really time for us to try to tackle that one. That's a biggie. It won't be done over a summer period. So I haven't told the building that yet, but as I've talked with the engineer, it's, if you look at the price tag on, on that, almost $3 million. There is no way for us to accomplish that task. And so we're going to work around what we can to accomplish it before we get to the next project list next year. Couple of other ones I'd point out, just stuff that's QC puff funded, is still doing, basically picking up the buildings that we didn't get this summer. Getting them done this summer for card access and then network wiring that goes along with the next item there, the phone system. Those all kind of work together and they're, they're going to take us some time and we don't anticipate being done by the end of summer. That'll work its way on into fall. Another big one that I was going to highlight too is kind of down towards the number 28 Walnut Middle School doing a lighting upgrade to LED for that building. Again, another large price tag, big heavy lift. But, you know, we were focused on Walnut because it's lighting in there, you know, in my opinion and, and others is, is not quite as good as we'd like to see it. Just so this will enhance that learning environment, we think, we expect. And so that's one of the reasons it's on there. So I have a total of 43 projects to tell you that we'll get all 43 done or that all 43 will even get started. I can't promise that just because we'll run into things like funding and just physically not having the time to accomplish all of our tasks here. So I'm going to stop there and I'll, I'll take any questions you might have. I gave you guys a list there so you can peruse that. If you have any questions that come up later on as well, feel free to reach out to me. We did talk about it in facility finance and they had to listen to me talk about all 43, so you guys are lucky.
Ms. Albers.
Can you speak to the vape detection systems and how that kind of fits under safety?
Yeah. So the vape detectors, granted, they do vape, but they do other things. And so we put vapes in even elementary bathrooms because we put those where we can't put cameras. And so some of those larger restrooms, they detect the vape piece, but they'll detect loud sound and atmosphere, you know, so fight or things of that nature. And it ties to the camera system, so if one of these things does take place, then those cameras turn on immediately to record whatever, whoever's coming out at that point in time. They're, they're pretty useful and we've, we've, they've helped us in our secondary. I don't think we'll have a lot of vape issues in the elementaries. Does that answer your question? Okay. Okay.
The QC, QC puff dollars, those are federal funds?
Those are not.
They're state?
Those, I don't, if you recall, we had passed the QC puff bond. And so I don't know that I can get into the detail, Mr. Harden can, but it's, it's still a bond. We, we're still having to pay those back through, through a period of time. And he's going to come and help me out here.
I just love saying QC puff.
I do too, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So Qualified Capital Purpose Undertaking Fund, just to be sure that you know what that is. And so last year, actually in September, we issued $7.2 million worth of bonds. And it was for a whole litany of projects that were qualified by legal opinion to be funded by that mechanism. We have up to three cents of levy that we can do that for those particular purposes. And so we can't just use that money to do anything we want, has to be qualified. So safety and security was something that the legislature actually did for us to add that capability to fund that. This fund goes all the way back to the 1990s and maybe even before with Americans with Disabilities Act and the barrier elimination removal is where it started. And it's migrated all the way to taking care of things like safety and security and that. So this is money that we already have. We sold the bonds, we've got the proceeds, we spent about a little under half of it. This is the second part.
And so it's the legislature that, that can then dictate what we use this for because safety's been added in, what, the last 18 months?
Safety and security was added just the year, so I want to say the 23 legislative session. In September of '24, then we issued $7.2 million worth of bonds that were qualified for safety and security for a whole litany of projects. And those just weren't able to get done last year, so they're on this year's list and funded with those dollars.
Excellent, thank you.
Good, great question.
Other questions?
I don't see any more questions.
Very good. One thing I was going to add, I'm giving you this for information. It's, it's not something that you'll need to vote on because these larger projects are all sizable enough that you'll hear about them when we do go out for proposal and bring those to you for approval at that time, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Petch. Okay, item number 6.3 Capital Equipment Lease Purchase, Apple Incorporated, Mr. Cory Gerhart.
Good evening. That was the fastest project list I think I've ever seen. Good job, Dan. I told him eight minutes and I think he got close, but anyway, so we're changing a little bit about how we purchase staff devices. The equipment management plan, previously we were purchasing a fifth of the devices for staff every year. And what we found last year when we started making the transition, because it made sense to switch back to using Apple over our Windows PC products, mostly because of the total cost of ownership of those, you know, fell in line with what we were currently experiencing with PCs before. And the unified hardware platform actually makes it a bit easier for my support team to service it. When, when we got to having conversations about what the future looked like with Apple, they came to us and said, we have this opportunity that can get you onto a fleet of devices that you're managing a single model year and you're doing that. that you're managing a single model year, and you're doing that for a long time. And what that does is frees up a lot of our folks from having to troubleshoot and, and work with staff when we have individual issues where we might have a chipset from a particular wireless card in this year model of a device that's conflicting with a driver or software that we're using for something or the other. Well, that gets really complicated when you have five different model years and five different sets of chips and five different driver sets out there. And so, this is gonna allow us to, to come to where we're only dealing with one, one platform for our staff. And the nicest thing about it was Apple said, we'll, we'll do it for you at zero percent interest on a lease purchase. So, essentially, we're able to do that, continue to make the payments just like we were before annually, but we have the equipment up front and we can use it throughout that, and then we own it at the end. So, the, the one thing that, that puts this in line financially is that the residual value on these, these devices is substantially higher than what it was on our Windows equipment. And so, even though the, the initial purchase price might be slightly higher, when you look at your, your rebate you're gonna get at the end if you decide to divest of it through either a third party that will pay you, you know, a hundred to two hundred and fifty dollars per device, or we look at a, a process where we sell them outright to, you know, staff, we have that in place too, where they can pass a dollar over whatever a third party would pass so that we're in line with statute, but that gives them a, kind of a fringe benefit as well. So, on the table here tonight is just the, the lease purchase agreement, the total for this particular round. It's for a thousand devices, and it's about eight hundred and eight thousand dollars. We, we did go ahead and get this paperwork all done because Apple reached out and said, if you move quickly, you can save a hundred dollars a unit, which in our case was a hundred thousand dollars, or about eleven percent. So, we did go ahead and move forward, but I still need authorization from the board to finalize the lease agreement and, and the lease purchase so that we can, we can have this in place for Apple's financing department going forward. So, any questions about that?
Well, thank you, Mr. Gearhart.
All right, very good.
Okay, item six point four, E-Rate Wireless Networking RFP.
So, this is a, the E-Rate program is the, also, I always like to explain kind of where this comes from. On your phone bill, there's a universal service fee, and that universal service fee, federal, is, is sent to the FCC, who then sends it to the Universal Services Administrative Corporation, who then funds the E-Rate program. And E-Rate, there's, there's two different types, there's what they call category one and category two. And category one allows us to, to buy all of our internet connectivity and our fiber connectivity between buildings, and they pay ninety cents on the dollar based on our current free introduced lunch rates. Category two allows us to take some additional dollars and use that to purchase equipment that supports that networking. So things like switches, access points, cabling, connectors, maybe any management software that we need. This RFP is to essentially replace every access point that we have in the district. We currently have two different models, they were purchased in two different years, and they're reaching end of life, and it's time to, to do the replacement. That, that equates to about a thousand access points. And these aren't the same as the ones you go down to Best Buy and get, unfortunately. They're fairly expensive, so we anticipate with all the services to do the installation, do the replacement, do the mapping, and then afterwards, survey every inch of every square foot of every classroom and room in our entire district to determine we have good signal strength and we have the ability to, to, to do what we need to do from the networking perspective. You know, I'm anticipating this coming in somewhere in the neighborhood of a million to a million and a quarter dollar, uh, one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The nice thing is with category two and the E-Rate funding, those are federal funds again, we're responsible for approximately ten percent of that. So when we think about it, we're looking at a general fund expenditure of about a hundred twenty-five to perhaps a hundred fifty thousand dollars, depending on, on how things go. So, today, this is information. I will be back next month because the RFPs are actually coming due at the end of this month. I'll bring it to Facilities and Finance, and we'll have, we'll have a bidder selected for the next meeting. And then, at that meeting, I'll ask for authorization to file the necessary paperwork with the E-Rate program through the Universal Service Administration Corporation to make all this happen next summer. So, along with all the things Dan's doing, and, and all of the wiring that's happening in six buildings, and all of the access points, and all the computers, and then we'll talk about copiers in January and February. So, it's gonna be a fun summary. Any questions?
Questions, Mr. Gearhart? See none.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, item number six point five, policy. Mr. Fisher.
Well, as part of an early Christmas present to all of you, we're only gonna do three policies tonight. So, please enjoy that. The first one we have here is ninety-two eleven, which deals with the district's annual report, which is something that Mr. Roush is working on right now, and will have out before too long. As we've done with a lot of other policies, we tried to streamline and make the policy really reflect what the requirement is and, and not necessarily go into all the procedural pieces. And this was a policy, again, if you read the first sentence in this policy, the superintendent shall prepare and distribute each year an annual report in accordance with Rule Ten. Rule Ten, which is the regulations and procedures for the legal operation of schools. We're required to do it. We really wouldn't need to have a policy about it at all, we're required to do it. Rule Ten spells out what our annual report has to be. And so in reality, all of the things that are listed down there, the procedural items, are really part of Rule Ten. And rather than having a policy that we would have to go back and change if Rule Ten were to change, or if we decided we wanted to do something additional, I think it's just better practice to have the policy as simple as possible. So, in effect, the policy would simply be that we're gonna follow the guidelines that are in Rule Ten. So, questions around that? Okay. So, the next one, ninety-five oh one, deals with staff and student memorials. And again, this one was one that, this was one that has a number of things fairly spelled out, but again, there are no specific guidelines out there, so there's a need for spelling out some things in this one. And so, the, the first part of this does spell out some of the, the details around staff and student memorials, which, you know, for the most part, are something that we're gonna steer clear of as much as possible. All of the, the guidance that we would get from any outside group would tell us that, you know, we should limit what we do with, with memorials. Because obviously, as soon as you do something for one situation, you have another situation that comes along that's a little bit different, and trying to figure out how, how to treat that, that memorial makes it very difficult. Is spelled out in here, the memorial page in the yearbook, and I think that is something that has been done on a fairly frequent basis, and seems to be something that's been fairly well reserved, or received by the public, so we're not proposing any changes to that necessarily. The statement that's in there that is read and, and is struck, basically talks about other memorials. And I think as we talk through this, our thought was is that, you know, again, that idea of not creating, and, and really this, the statement says it to some extent, but it does put the idea out there that we might do memorials. And I think not putting something in policy that necessarily says that, doesn't say that you're not gonna do it, but it doesn't necessarily say that we're going down that road. And I think, again, that's just a better practice to leave that statement out. So, that really is what the, the proposed change to this one is. Are there questions around that? Okay. All right, on to use of video surveillance. This would be a new policy. We haven't had any policy in place around the use of video surveillance, and this would include both the mounted video cameras that we've been using for a number of years. We also do have a couple of body worn cameras that our security people use. And as we really talked about, you know, the, the body worn cameras and, and what our policy around that should be, we, we came to the conclusion that we really should have a policy dealing with all video surveillance. And so that's, that's really what this policy is, it is a new policy, eighty-four sixty-three, and it basically spells out how we would use video as far as utilization of the still cameras as well as the, the body worn cameras. Questions about anything that's in that policy?
Mr. Garcia Mendez.
I had, I'm curious if the body worn cameras, is that protected through FERPA?
Really, any, anything that we would do with cameras is protected through FERPA. So really, any, anything that we would record, we would have to follow FERPA guidelines, whether it was done with a body worn camera, or whether it was done with a, you know, the, the cameras that we have mounted permanently. So, we still have to follow all the FERPA guidelines.
Okay. Just because I was getting like, I was doing some like back, background research, and I was finding conflicting information of the Department of Ed recognizing, I guess, FERPA, that was, body worn cameras were protected under FERPA. So, I don't, I don't know, I was just like looking that up, and then there was some inconsistency that, that the Department of Ed doesn't recognize body cameras as protected under FERPA, but I, I don't know a lot of that, I guess it would kind of rely more on like what's property for the district, right?
Yeah, you know, and that's, that's really, it's the, it's the recording itself, it's not really where the recording came from that, that really follows under the FERPA, FERPA guidelines is, you know, obviously there is limitations on what you can do with, with what you capture, whether it's body worn or whether it's a mounted camera. And so, again, when our attorney put the policy together, you know, he really didn't, didn't treat body worn any different than what, you know, the only, the only real discussion we really ever had about the body worn was who would wear them, and initially we had talked about, you know, training for administrators and some things like that, and, and I, I think we kind of moved away from that, not saying that we couldn't, but in the original language that was in there, there was more of a, kind of an expectation that they might be used by building administrators, and I think some of our building administrators were not very comfortable with that and didn't necessarily want that. And so we revised that language around that so that it really only spells out that, you know, our, our security people would use them, but it, it doesn't eliminate the possibility. I mean, if something came up and we really felt like there was another place where we wanted to use a body worn camera, I think we left that door open. The FERPA question, I mean, that's, that's certainly something that I can run by our attorney again and just ask them if there are any, any FERPA concerns, but again, I think if there was, when they originally put the policy together, that would have been one of his, you know, main considerations is, is how does this fit under FERPA?
Ms. Albers.
So Lee and Wes in our safety department wear cameras and have always worn cameras, correct?
Well, I don't know about always, but they have for the last couple of years.
Okay, but they've worn them for, and then, any police officers that we have on our campuses are not GIPS employees, they work for the Grand Police Department, and they always have cameras on as well, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
All right.
All right, that's it, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Action items, number seven point one, capital equipment lease purchase for Apple Incorporated, Mr. Corey Gearhart.
How's it going? Any questions in the last seven minutes?
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the capital equipment lease purchase with Apple Incorporated.
I make a motion to authorize a superintendent or designate to negotiate and execute an equipment lease purchase agreement with Apple Incorporated. The contract term shall stipulate a maximum annual payment of three hundred and fifty thousand or less with a term not exceeding seven years.
Second by Ms. Albers? Discussion? Seeing none, we may proceed to a vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight point one, Grandon Public Schools Foundation Report, Ms. Lisa Albers.
The Foundation's online scholarship application went live on December first. Students will be able to apply for over two hundred and five scholarships through one application. The Foundation hosted the Scholarship Fair on December third at GISH. The fair included scholarship application presentations from the GIPS Foundation, as well as booths manned by several colleges. In addition, Education Quest was assisting with the FAFSA. The Foundation Executive Board was presented with a twenty twenty-five audit by AMGL. The audit was accepted and approved by the GIPS Foundation Board. The Foundation also heard from the Board Development slash Nominating Committee. The new slate of officers were voted in for twenty twenty-six. Past President Kelly Inc., President Paul Hous, Vice President Diana Kellogg, Treasurer Shane Wiesman, and one new board member was voted on and accepted, Marcy Tompkins. Marcy will begin her term in January twenty twenty-six. This concludes my GIPS Foundation Report.
Thank you, Ms. Albers. Okay, eight point two, Student Representative Report, Catherine.
Good evening, everybody. I would like to start off by presenting the highlights of the twenty twenty-five winter activities and events. So we've had a lot of good kickoffs for like season. So first, we got Unified Bowling, they won the twenty twenty-five state championship title at Norfolk, holding the first ever state title for the program. Also, the powerlifting team kicked off their season at Korean Prep's Early Bird Meet, having thirty, thirteen out of eighteen lifters that placed in their weight class. The girls' team won their first team championship, championship ever. Senior McKenna Masonic was named girls' lifter of the meet. Girls' wrestling earned Kearney High in White Runner Ups as a team for their first tournament. Seniors Addie Gates, Bella Warren, and Tanya Savala, as well as Junior Fabiola Cortez, all earned gold at the tournament. Boys' wrestling secured the victory against Columbus on their first duel, duel of the season. Senior Kayden Harden earned his career's one hundred win. The Islander Robotics eighty-one fifty-one W team won the Concordia High School Tournament, bringing back their first trophy of the season. The dance team hosted a father-daughter dance at GISH, having great music and dance moves. Senior class officers attended the twenty twenty-five State Education Conference, sharing their thoughts and opinions on the cell phone policy, having a four-four-four positive feedback on the impact the policy had on students and their environment. As well, we hosted a bowling party at Westside, Westside Lanes for twenty twenty-six seniors to have fun with their classmates. The GISH Theater Department will be hosting Night of One Acts this weekend at GISH Little Theater. On Friday and Saturday showcasing the one hundred and forty-six Point Flame, the Department's Holiday Show, and Susie Scrooge. Show Choirs kicking off their season and getting ready to host Junior Islander Show Choir Camp, Catching Stars, inviting all three of our middle school students to attend. National Honor Society inductee Caitlin Sedomka hosted a donation drive for the Central Nebraska Humane Society. Partnering up with Solly Park Elementary, she delivered seven hundred items total. Lastly, the Student Council Lastly, the student council held a gratitude treat for students to write what they were thankful for by filling the school's entrance with gratitude. The events around GIPS. M-Tech hosted a family night, anyway, M-Tech hosted a family night, hosting families and UNL staff. Students can showcase what they have been learning and working on throughout the semester at this fun event that brought our community together. Eagleman Student Character Council collected three thousand three hundred and sixty-five items to donate to the Hope Harbor Inc. pantry, a great showcase of the power of compassion and leadership. GISH hosted a Lady Islander Jamboree, a friendly basketball match for all three of our middle schools teams to compete in. Lastly, Islander Extravaganza took in place this last Sunday, welcoming future islanders, showcasing all of the amazing opportunities and school activities they could participate in through their high school career. I would like to give my shout out to Ms. Wagner, a teacher who is truly dedicated to our school district and to every student she works with. She constantly shows up for all of us, taking the time to understand each student's learning style and adjusting her teaching so everybody feels supported. Ms. Wagner drives from Omaha to Grand Island every week, even renting her own teacher apartment just so she can be fully present to our school. When Glamour Gals started last year, she immediately stepped up as our head advisor and has been committed ever since. Ms. Wagner has committed to showing up every Glamour Gals event, including three senior home visits, monthly meetings, and monthly community service at Orphan Grain Train. She goes above and beyond by offering rides, providing supplies for our meetings, and supporting our club's growth. Although this is Ms. Wagner's last year in our community, the impact she has made on Glamour Gals will stay with us forever. Her dedication has truly helped shape our club into what it is today. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my report. Are there any comments or concerns that I can address?
Mr. Hawley.
No comments or concerns, more compliments. So I had a chance to sit and listen to our students speak at state conference. And we've all been there many times and we've heard many students speak. And I was proud, number one, of just how eloquent all of you were. And you represented our district well. I think you left the people in that room with a good taste for implementing the cell phone policy because of the positive feedback that you guys gave. You and the rest of the student representatives were very genuine. And you guys just did a really, really good job of conveying this concept. So I appreciate you guys being bold enough to go out and speak. It's not easy. I want to let you know that we're proud of you.
Thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you, Catherine. Excellent job. Okay, item eight point three, superintendent report, Mr. Matt Fisher.
And I'll just pick up with that piece from Catherine's report as far as the school board conference and their presentation. And again, just to reiterate what Mr. Hawley said, I thought they did an outstanding job. I think Mr. Hubbard came in and really laid the foundation for how our policy had been implemented and the, you know, the stance that was taken, the way it was communicated. I think did a really good job of laying that out for people. And then I do think, once our students had a chance to talk about the impact of what we're doing with the cell phones, I think I had that number of people that came up to me afterwards that were complimentary of our students, first of all, but then really had a lot of interest. And actually, I've had a couple of other superintendents that have reached out to me since, you know, since we've been back from Omaha that are wanting more information about it. So again, I think it's something that, you know, we should be proud of what we're doing with cell phones and certainly should be proud of the way our students represented us in Omaha. So, good job. Islander Extravaganza, Catherine also mentioned that. I had the chance to walk through. They did a little different layout this year. They actually spread the groups out across a good share of the high school. You know, last year they had it pretty much isolated to the west gym or the east gym and the area around there. This time they really spread people out. I think it really worked well. I think they gave people, when they came in, a map with a guided tour and kind of had our ambassadors spread out across the building to help lead people through. And I think gave people a lot of opportunity to really have some meaningful conversations with different activities that they felt like they were interested in. So I thought it worked really well. I think our, you know, we did it on a Sunday afternoon, which again, was a little different timing. So I know that the high school is analyzing their numbers and tweaking things. But I think overall it was, you know, a very good evening. In the foundation report, the scholarship fair was mentioned. I think that was another event that I think is a really good event. It gave, you know, not only our students, but students from all of the schools in Grand Island who are eligible for different scholarships that are done through the foundation, a chance to come in and really hear about the application process, first of all, and then really get information from a number of different colleges that were there and also find out about applying for scholarships offered through the colleges. So I think it was really a good kickoff to getting our students going on applying for scholarships. Now, I know that the foundation people were disappointed in the number of students that we had there. So again, I think that's one of those things they're trying to analyze and figure out, you know, what's the best way to do this? How do we get more students to come? And ultimately, how do we get more students to apply for scholarships? Because we don't have the number applying that we really should have. And so I think that's something that they're really trying to figure out is how do we push more students to apply for scholarships? I think we have over seven hundred thousand dollars in scholarships available through the foundation. And I think it's two hundred and twelve different scholarships. And so, you know, again, we would like to see a good number of our students applying for those scholarships. Had a chance today to take in midterm graduation. So that's always a neat event, see those students that in many cases have struggled to get to a graduation. In some cases, it's students that are graduating early. But a lot of those students are students that, you know, for one reason or another, didn't quite, you know, make it to graduate last spring. Cases may have been even longer than that, but have stuck with it and actually got to that point where they are graduating. One of the other really kind of neat things, we graduated our first graduate with a seal of bilingual, what is it? It's not bilinguality? Biliteracy, there it is, biliteracy, that's what it is. So anyhow, the state actually has a opportunity for students to apply if they are bilingual and get that seal. And then that seal is something that we will put on transcripts. It goes on their diploma. They actually got a medal. So again, one of those great skills that I certainly wish I had. But certainly something that's going to serve our students well in the future, so. Catherine did a good job of covering winter activities. One of the activities she didn't touch on was swimming. It has kicked off. We did have our home swimming meet. We've also ran into a little bit of a snag with swimming right now that we're trying to work through with the YMCA. Their pool heater is out. And so we are trying to figure out how to work with them to rectify that situation as quickly as possible because obviously we can't host meets if the water's cold. We also are going to really struggle to practice and may end up having to send kids, you know, out of the community because that's the only indoor pool we have in the community. So again, that's something that we've been working with the YMCA to try and get that straightened out as quickly as possible. So hopefully it's something that doesn't interfere with that season too much. Lots and lots of concerts going on. So if you're, you know, sitting home in the evening and you don't know what to do, just pull up a calendar. I'll bet there's a concert going on somewhere. So, yeah, we've, I've had a chance to go to lots of them. A lot of really great things going on when you look at our music programs and the things that are going on in our elementary, middle, and high school. Really see some good things. Had a chance to meet with both of our senators in the last week or so. We had just one-on-one sit downs with the senator and a few of our board members and some of our district leadership team and had good conversations with both Senator Quick and Senator Lippincott. Also, last Friday, the governor and both of those senators had their legislative kickoff that First National Bank hosts every year. And so did have a chance to go over and hear the governor talk about that. The council of school administrators also had their legislative kickoff yesterday. And so starting to get a sense of some of the things that are in the legislature. Obviously, the four hundred and fifty-one million dollar deficit that is being projected is kind of forefront in what the legislators are thinking around. And, you know, I guess never like to see a deficit, but, you know, one of the good things about a deficit is maybe nothing happens legislatively, which usually is the best possible outcome. So anyhow, we'll see where that goes. We'll know more. One of the things I did want to mention and invite, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, we are going to have United Way do one of their drawings for their keys for Christmas right here in the boardroom. And we would like to have any board member that would happen to be available at nine tomorrow, come and join us for that drawing. So, so anyone that would like to get around and be part of the drawing, we'd love to have you join us. The only other thing I wanted to mention is we do have our retreat scheduled on the third of February. And in addition to the facility discussion we'll have that night, have also our governance committee talked about when and what would we do with the board self-evaluation? And they felt like it would be good to have people from the School Boards Association come in and help us kind of break that down and talk about, you know, what goals and direction that evaluation could help us provide. So I have checked with Marsha Herring at the School Boards Association. They will be available to do that. The only real question I have, and you guys can get back to me and we'll actually send something out to you and ask you, what time would be good to start? A four o'clock start, a four-thirty start? Probably about an hour to work on that, that piece prior to diving into the facilities piece. So anyhow, you'll get a chance to chime in on what time you'd like to start on that.
Facility starts at five?
We, I think we had originally talked about five, five-thirty start for the facility side of things. It doesn't necessarily have to. I mean, it's going to be one deal where we're going to do both things. But obviously, the earlier we can start, the earlier we get to get done. So we'll send that out and see what works for everybody. That's all I had to report. Any questions that anyone would have for me?
Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Okay, item number nine, executive session for the purpose of negotiations and for the superintendent's contract because it is in the best interest of the public to discuss this matter in closed session. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion for the board to convene to executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations and for the superintendent's contract.
Second by Ms. Albers. Any discussion? None, I see. We may proceed to a vote. Motion passes.